Hope everybody enjoyed their little break. I'd like to say that on behalf of the council, I know everybody misses our mayor and wishes him a speedy recovery from everything that I've heard that he's, every day, he's getting a little bit better. And I can tell you, being more than any, as much as anybody, wishes him a speedy recovery that he can come back to us very quickly. And one thing that is on my mind I wanted to mention today before we get started, that starting next year is going to be our 60th anniversary as a city. And I'm not sure what kind of plans that we have for that, but I think we need to be thinking about that. This is a really big milestone for us, and we should be doing some special things to recognize 60 years. And I was around then, so not all of you were, but Mr. Duhany, I would love to hear the staff's thoughts and what council might be thinking of some special things that we might be doing, doing for next year. So now, Mr. Duhany, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Wilson, just a quick update on the 60 year. We're going to send out a package item this Friday to the council in their package on our proposed plans for the 60 year as a celebration to honor our 60 years, just for council's review and consideration, to give us some guidance and feedback if we're moving in the right direction as we move, move towards this hallmark occasion for the city.
Fantastic.
So the first briefing, Vice Mayor, members of council is at the request of Council Member Wooton. This is to provide an update on the Centerville District recreational study.
Good afternoon. Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Manager Duhany, Michael Kirschman, Director of Parks and Recreation, happy to be here. What we're going to do today is give you a brief overview of the study we completed back in September of 2020 on the feasibility of an eighth recreation center in Virginia Beach in the Centerville area. So just a quick recap, we actually started with a rather in-depth study on a modernization study for the four older centers. We hired HBA Architecture and Moody Nolan, phenomenal team from across the country, to work on this study. And then we added to that scope of work, a separate study on the feasibility of an eighth rec center. I will say that I think the moment I walked in the door three and a half years ago, my first week here, I actually heard from members of the community, and this was prior to even being on the council, Councilman Wooton, people were saying, well, hey, what about this, what about this talk about a Centerville rec center? Up until then, it had been nothing but talk, a lot of talk. And so we said, well, let's, um, let's get something on paper and let's have the architects and the consultants look into, what, what would that look like? So the feasibility looked at, is there demand? What's the demand analysis for a potential eighth center? What could be some possible levels of service and some of the core amenities that would go in such a center? We looked at where it could go, and we looked at how much it would cost, just to get these questions answered. And if you recall, the consultants were here, oh, that was about a year and a half ago, and we gave a brief, we gave this brief, brief overview back then. So real quick, when you're looking at market analysis, we do a random household survey. We go out to the public every year, do a statistically valid household survey to the 95% confidence level, and we're always asking the public, what do you need? What do you want? Recreational trends change, and it's good to stay on top of that with our data. And so one thing I can say is, the residents of Virginia Beach love our recreation centers and the recreation center system we have. And that's due to decades of support from the public and our elected officials. And so you will see that when we ask the public, you know, what do you have a need for, recreation centers rank number one. So we already have seven, but they're still saying they need more. And you can see the other amenities that fall within the recreation centers or those fall out on the demand analysis. Another question I ask is, not only what do you have a need for, but how important to you is that need? So they rank the level of intensity of need. When you combine the number of people that want to, want an amenity or need an amenity with how bad they want it, you get what's called the priority investment rankings. And they, they merge those two metrics together to come up with high priority, medium priority, and lower priority amenities that if funded at some point by the city, basically they're saying, this is where you have the biggest bang for the buck, that most people served, and they really, really need these things. You will see, just like any surveys across the country, nothing trumps paved biking trails. Trails are always the number one amenity that the public wants across the community. But you will see closely followed by trails here in Virginia Beach, recreation centers, again, rank very high. So we do know that there is demand out there. When we pull the demographics for the Centerville area versus the other seven recreation centers, what you're looking at here is, based on number of households around a potential eighth rec center, it is in all likelihood that a potential eighth rec center would probably be our third busiest. And that is based on convenience. So when you have lots of households around the center, that tends to draw visitation. Nothing trumps convenience. Yes, some people might go before work or after work, but really, when you have households, rooftops around rec centers, and you have higher density, you have higher visitation and hence higher efficiency to those facilities. You can see Kempsville is our number one facility in terms of usage. Kempsville trumps all the other rec centers in terms of just demand. And we do know, we strongly suspect that if a Centerville rec center was ever built, it would take demand off Kempsville. Our number one complaint at Kempsville is, I come, I can't get on a piece of equipment, the classes are full, I can't get in the pool, the lanes are all filled. So it's just, again, a lot of use due to density and number of people live around there. So what you're looking at there is a demographic analysis. I won't go into detail, but you can see where Centerville falls out in terms of total population of households that would, what would be within a three mile radius of a future center. I'm comparing it to the other seven centers in the city. So the next thing we looked at was, where could such a center went? We only looked at parcels of land controlled by Parks and Recreation. We started with every piece of parcel owned in that area. Could it fit enough acreage? What's there already? Does it make sense? We narrowed those 28 sites down to five. We worked with our consultant. We even looked at sites across the line in the Chesapeake. So during this process, we looked at all types of partnership opportunities. We engaged Regent University and talked to them about a potential university-public partnership. We engaged the City of Chesapeake on a public-public partnership, either on our side of the line or their side of the line. And then we looked at our parcels. And you can see where we looked at all the different sites and the preferred sites. The top five sites can all fit such a building, and the preferred site, based on demographics and where it would likely have the most success in terms of visitation, people coming, you know, when you build an expensive facility, you want it getting used. We believe that that would be Site A. That is the current site of the Charleston Athletic Complex. What could go in this facility? Well, we would have all of our core amenities. You'd have a fitness area, you'd have an aquatic amenity, elevated walking track, you would have your gymnasium, of course, childcare, all of our core amenities. And then we looked at really five different options on what an eighth center could be. In general, I'm just going to lay this out for you. Option number one is a rec center akin to Williams Farm. So what I'd call a standard rec center. Very nice, has a gymnasium, has a pool, has a fitness center, has multipurpose rooms, has childcare. Option number two is a Williams Farm type rec center with a joint library branch within the building as well. So in the library's visiting document, we're looking with them for if and when we ever build new, to start consolidating services under the same roof. Shared parking, shared common spaces, shared bathrooms, higher efficiencies, all that kind of good stuff. And then you can drop your kid off or a program and go read a book, or you can be in your class, and you could be, you know, you can be, a lot of, a lot of good synergy between those two. And I know the public libraries, they have this in their vision plan as well, both for if we ever build a future one in the SeaTac area or in the Centerville area. So that's what Building Two option is. Building Three is the same as Building Two, only adding to it what's called a Big Mac. And this is a different type of court facility. We don't have any MAC courts in our rec centers currently. Building Four is all of that plus a 50 meter pool. We have no 50 meter pools in our system right now. And then option number five is same as Four, but take off the library, if that makes sense. So again, different square footage for each. The consultant calculates all that out, what's it going to cost to build each one of those? What's it going to cost to run each one of those? And we look at all five of those scenarios, just so, again, we'd have an ideal on what would this thing cost and what are the options that are out there. So that's an example of a MAC court, just in case you weren't familiar with a MAC court. It's got a different surface. You can do indoor soccer, indoor lacrosse, all kinds of different activities. Again, we don't have any of those. If we ever do any future rec center or rec center expansion, I would certainly recommend the consideration of a MAC court along with a bamboo spring-loaded court like at Kempsville, so you could do all different types of activities. Very common, just about any new center I'm seeing built around the country, will have a MAC court as well as a standard gymnasium, especially at the colleges and high schools, or colleges and universities. This is going a little faster than I thought here with my clicking. So you can see some, we, the consultant drew up how this could look, so we could do some site fits on the different parcels of land and how big they are. You can see on the left where they, kind of getting a feel for how big the building is, if you add the library, if you add the MAC court, if you want to take those off. To the right is what the second floor would look like, similar to our newer rec centers with an elevated walking track and some of many of these upstairs as well. And if you add the 50 meter pool, again, how big this is, does this get, and can this fit on the parcels of land we're looking at? So here is an aerial image of Charleston Athletic Complex. Right now, this is a home of the Charleston Athletics Association. So if this site was ever utilized for a different purpose, such as a rec center, these facilities would need moved. So you would need to add that cost to the construction cost of a rec center, you got to build them, their facility somewhere else. And we do have sites for that, although I should say, we have not engaged them at all. They might be listening to this right now for the first time. So they're probably, what are you talking? But it's not happening today, it's not happening tomorrow. This would just be the, a key site for a rec center. Again, just look at it, look at all the households around it. You do have a neighborhood connection to the south, you have all the apartments across the street, high density, frontage on the main street, good access, everything you want in a regional facility such as a recreation center. And there's just one of the test fits. So we just did some test modeling, would it fit on the site with parking, with stormwater, all that kind of good stuff. We believe it could fit. Out of the five options, staff's preferred option is Option Three, if something like this were to happen. And there's various reasons for that, happy to explain that in more detail if needed. So here are your, and what, what would this cost? In $20, $20, a straight Williams Farm type rec center, it's going to cost you almost 40 million, 37 million. Option Two with a public library, if you're going to add on about a seven, I think we did 17,000 square feet for, for a library branch, is going to get you about the 40, 45, 46 million. Option Three, you add the MAC, you're at the low 50s. And then from there, for a 50 meter pool, 70 million, back down to 61 if you take out the library. So there's your ballpark numbers on what it would cost from the capitals to do this, excluding, if it goes at the Charleston Athletic Complex someday, excluding moving that facility to a new site. So tack on a couple more million on top of that. Now, I will say this, one of the sites that the Charleston Athletic Complex could go to in the future would be the current site of our maintenance facility, which is currently getting moved with ARPA funding and getting relocated to the Dam Neck site. So that site would become available. With that being said, then it is, what would it cost to run the facility? In general, you're looking at $5 million per year in general, depending on the options and how big it is and what's in there. But that is excluding, that's excluding revenue. So for the sake of argument, let's say the rec center brings in one to $2 million in revenue, you would take that off the operating costs. With me is Chad Morris, and if we have any questions, happy to answer those. So the operating costs are anywhere from two and a half to five million, but that does not include revenue earned. So if the rec center is going to bring in, in general, a million to $2 million in revenue, it would be anywhere from one and a half to three million in net cost to the city to operate, which is in line with standard rec centers.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mike. Question about the Charleston Lakes, is there, is that property leased to an association or any?
No.
We, we own and operate it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Ross.
I noticed a report, was it delivered in 2020 to the city?
Mm-hmm.
So we've been, had it for a year? This is the first we're seeing?
This was one of, this was one of the very first presentations, I think, after COVID hit. We were at the convention center and the consultants came and did the presentation.
Long presentation.
It was.
The reason why I'm asking, because 2020 cost information is like asking about gas in 1960.
True. Good point.
You've really got to be adding a significant escalation factor to that, at least, I'd say 15% would be, being kind. So I just think that. And the other thing I can't remember, because a lot of things have changed relative to the energy prices, Olympic pool, sized pools, which is what you just referred to, 50 meter pool, energy costs of those things are huge. And I know we have some basis for our current energy, plus energy projections are not going negative, they're going up in real terms. So what kind of escalation clause did they use in their model-to-model energy costs, which the pool ends up being the biggest expense, both maintenance and energy consumption and chemicals of all the things in the facilities?
Yep.
I know we've closed a number of pools and so have HOAs just because of those costs. So how did that factor, what portion of those costs are most?
So I'd have to dive into numbers on that. I will say that a subconsultant on this team was Councilman Hunsacker, the number one aquatics consulting firm in the country. So they would have developed the cost per square foot to build it, the cost per square foot to operate it, which would have been incorporated into these numbers. Now, again, those would have been at, to your point, 2020 numbers, but I'm sure they're included in the overall estimates. And if we ever did do an eighth rec center, we'd probably want to consider a design build. We'd figure out what the cost, what size we're going to build, what we're going to do. To your point, the costs are going to be different than what's up there, based on the market these days.
Well, I just think when people see a number, you know, and then they think that's what it costs, but in reality, no one ever reads the fine print that's $20, $20. And then when they, we ran into this when we were out there talking about the bond referendum, you know, how much did we escalate the price, all these things, because people want to think, hey, you told me it costs this, but when I actually get it and open the door, it cost me that.
Right.
And I'm just trying to make sure that we, that we are very good disclosure, that these do not reflect market price.
And there wouldn't need to be an escalator, because quite honestly, if you dropped in front of me right now 45 million to go build this, it would not go under construction for two or three years. So you'd have to have an escalator from the time you start the project to when you actually go out to bid for the construction, because it takes about two years for design.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Roach.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. I appreciate the presentation. Just as a point of clarification, was the, I recall receiving a briefing about this from the consultant about a year ago, we were at the convention center. Is this effectively a re, another form of the same presentation?
This was the exact information, we brought it down to seven slides, and we're redoing it right now.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I know the conversation is ongoing, but I just wanted to clarify, there's no new information in this report, it's just a continuation of the conversation we've had about feasibility and desirability of a Centerville rec, rec center, correct? And my other question is related to, just to speak, just to be direct, are you recommending that, that the city consider developing a Centerville rec center? Are you sharing the information about feasibility? Is it a policy recommendation from your office that the city would create a Centerville rec center?
I would say this, we have many needs in Parks and Recreation. How we prioritize those funds, I leave to the city manager and leave the city council to decide. We have a VB trail that I would recommend being funded. We have a Centerville rec center concept, I'd recommend being funded. We've deferred maintenance in our parks, we have undeveloped park sites. And so there are certainly a lot of needs out there from just a recreational, public recreation standpoint, but I really don't want to get into prioritizing those against each other.
We are in it, though. We are in it, and that's what I wanted to try to bring to the surface today, because I, I mean, I think that there is a very strong case made here for desirability of a Centerville rec center, but I also want to present that in the context of the existing needs throughout our city. Could you talk a little bit about the deferred maintenance on, on the parks and playgrounds?
Sure. So interestingly enough, as we did this visioning study for the rec centers two years ago, we are currently with a consultant doing a 10-year visioning study on the parks. So this laid out the modernization of the four older centers and a potential A center, said, here's the future of what could be for the recreation center system. On the park side of things, we know we have issues. We have over 40 park sites that are completely undeveloped. Some of these park parcels were acquired over 20 years ago, neighborhoods waiting for their parks to be built, don't even have a playground on them. We have about 80 other park sites that only have a playground, but no other recreational amenities. And then we know we have about a $30 million backlog in deferred maintenance, so assets that have outlived their lifespan, that really need replaced or repaired, you know, cracked tennis courts and playgrounds over 15 years old. The good news is, when it comes to the parks deferred maintenance, this body just approved about $15 million in ARPA funds to tackle deferred maintenance. And that's going to take more than just a bite, that's going to take a chunk out of that apple. It's really going to hit about 40 to 50% of our deferred maintenance backlog. That's incredible. It does mean, though, that there's still 40 to 50% of ugly, what I call ugly, still out there of existing assets that need replaced, let alone new parks, new neighborhood parks, new community parks, new regional parks, potential new rec centers, and as well trails, which rank very high like the VB trail. So those are the, that's the status of the parks, though, and kind of the needs that are out there.
Thank you. I do have a few other questions, and then I'll, don't want to monopolize the time here today. Do you, could you describe in just a brief detail, some of the staffing challenges that you've experienced in Parks and Rec, because, and also your understanding about when, as a nation, we could expect to recover from those shortages, because, and how that may impact adding an additional facility? And again, I'm not asking these questions with any particular prejudice, but I am asking them because I think they, we need to consider the full context of the scope of the impact of a discussion like this. And, and then I may have one other follow-up to that, but I think that's a really important, because as you know, we've, you know, you know better than anyone, we've, we've had to close some after-school care facilities.
Not yet.
Oh, okay, well.
We're hopeful. So, so I can answer your first question on what are our current challenges. I can't answer the second question on when it's going to change, although certainly we are making strides. So like all the city departments and private sector, we are facing some, some fairly significant staffing challenges right now. It's really impacting us, I'm going to take the full time out of the picture for right now, even though it is impacting us in many areas on our full-time side of things, especially groundskeepers and landscaping and parks maintenance. But when it comes to our part-time, we're really getting hit in our athletics area, lifeguards, and childcare. I mean, those are just three of our many areas where we're hundreds of positions down. As you know, we've had to scale back our childcare operations, all due to staffing challenges. We did notify parents at 14 school sites that they would be losing their childcare at their school sites effective January 3rd unless staffing levels improve. I want to give a huge shout out to the Manager Duhany, who authorized higher pay rates for our childcare positions. We advertised those a week ago, and within one week with 124 applications, we offered 33 jobs last week, in the first week of interviewing. To put that in perspective, prior to the new pay rates, we were getting about 10 applications every two weeks. And of those 10, three or four might be qualified, one or two might get hired, and you might have one person start. That wasn't even keeping up with normal churn, burn, turnover of the existing staff. To have 33 offers, we interviewed, staff were interviewing every meeting room all day Thursday and Friday last week, and have 33 offers, contingent offers made that day, pending background checks, is, is huge. We are cautiously optimistic, although I don't want to get the public's hopes up by telling them right now that your school will remain open on January 3rd, because I can't make that promise, but we are cautiously optimistic that the new pay rates are going to enable us to keep some, perhaps all of those schools open January 3rd, depending on how many people can actually start passing the background checks, when they can start onboard, and how soon we can get them out there, deployed to the sites. So that is, that is helping. Other areas of operation, our current rec centers are not open yet to pre-COVID hours of operation. We don't have the staff to stay open late. We don't have drop in childcare, we don't have the fitness classes we used to have, and we are about to reduce pool hours at rec centers due to our lifeguard shortages.
Thank you. I just think as a body and as a community, we, we need to go into these discussions eyes wide open about the existing challenges we have and how adding to the, adding to the capacity would affect those challenges. And finally, Mr. Kirschman, if I could just offer one, just editorial comment and matter of feedback, as a reflection not of you and your team, but just about the circumstances we find ourselves in, because I can speak to two requests that I've had recently that relate to Parks and Rec. The first being to establish a cricket field, cricket court, well, I don't know exactly what the correct terminology is, but that would enable our neighbors and residents to, to play cricket safely and fully enjoy the amenities that are available in our parks. And there were some concerns raised about all the things that we discussed here, staffing, site, and expense, and how it would impact operations, and not in a way that was prohibitive. And it's, and again, I want to clarify, I know that's not a reflection of your unwillingness to entertain the idea, it's a reflection of scarcity of resources. And I think the same could be said of the BMX discussion that we were having in the city that I'm hopeful for, and I want to thank you for, for being open to those conversations and, and for being a leader and helping to find a solution. But we're still looking at an expense that's sizable, but relative to a request like this would be very modest, that we haven't been able to parse through. And, and I do think that we need to be thoughtful about how to be responsive to some of those, what I might characterize as smaller requests that come up, at the same time as we consider the big requests. Because as a community, if we're not able to meet the smaller requests relative to creating a new structure, I think it, it may be construed by some to be problematic to, to be considering the big ones. All of that is to say, healthy lifestyle, recreation, these are all priorities for, I know everyone, especially me. And so it's just up to us to find a way to sort through that with the resources we have. And I thank Council Member Wooton for bringing this to our attention again and for entertaining just some questions I had about the project. Thank you.
I, I could say one thing, which is news to you and probably everybody here, I believe we have the cricket field programmed into the CIP.
FY '23.
FY '23. So we do plan to have that constructed at Salem Woods for that user group.
That's, that's amazing news. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Long before you were here, I remember that we had a rather in-depth presentation about the cost of operating our recreation centers. And it was pretty amazing what, what they cost to operate. And I think that was a very telling thing, if that could be updated, and how we're paying those costs. It seems to me that when we had the bond referendum that approved one of them.
Well, more than one, I think it was four.
Four, okay, in, in the late 80s. That money after the bonds were retained, were, were paid, has, is now going to operate the rec centers. I think we have that source. And so we do have some sources, but that doesn't cover it, because what would have been the operating cost in the late 80s is nowhere close to what it is now, I'm sure. But I know you've got all that data, and I certainly don't expect you to even try to attempt to answer it today. But another source out there that's a real rub with me is the open space money. When we, when we approved the open space plan in 2000 or whenever it was, we raised the meal tax, 0.44% of 1% or something like that, to buy the open space. And that's what you're looking at as being undeveloped to this point, a lot of parks.
Some of those, yeah.
Properties that we acquired for open space. And so, but we, we targeted that as a $50 million project, with 5 million of it that came from ARP, and you know, of course, we, but we spent all of that. And now we really don't have any open space program.
That's correct.
Which people are not happy when they find that out, because we get a lot of folks who say, well, the city ought to buy this property for open space. I know that you all need that money, but that money that was supposed to be meal t- meal tax money for open space is going for parks and recreation maintenance, I guess, at this point. So we've got all of these little other things that are out there that I'm glad that we're looking at the total, because we really can't look at anything piecemeal. We have to look at the entire thing. But this open space thing is a real rub with me, because I know there's a continuous request from people for us to buy parcels that people can see. Boy, that really should be open space. And if we look at that list of properties that we acquired with the open space money, we would say, oh my goodness, what if they had been developed? So I hope that's something that we'll keep in a part of all of this conversation, because it's...
Our current consultant that's doing the Parks Master Visioning Project is also looking at that, what makes sense in terms of future land acquisition? How much would it take? I will say that roughly 63, 64% of the public can walk to a park. And so that's called a 10-minute walk time. It's a national average that just about every city in the country has adopted in terms of a goal for parks and recreation, that you can walk or bike to a park or a trail. Because all the social and health outcomes result when you have easy access. We're at about 63, 64%, but what that means is roughly 34% of this public does not have a park within walking distance. And the question becomes, how can we, what is our mechanism in future in terms of looking at those gap areas, acquiring land? We don't have acquisition dollars right now, so that we can someday build a park close to every home. That is a challenge, and our consultants including that in our current study.
Thank you.
Mr. Branch?
Thank you so much. This is for a city manager. During the budget process, is each department going to come before us and lay out their priorities and needs? Or, I was just intrigued by learning something today about the list of things that are in the backlog for parks and rec. But can you tell us how that's going to fold out for us?
So from the last budget guidance meeting that we presented to council, I think three weeks ago or a month ago, we asked for guidance on this specifically. And I think the direction that I got from the body was they want to go through the process where we have all the departments come and all the different CIP programs come and update the council, right? So that's the direction that we, the budget team, is giving to all the departments to prepare a detailed presentation on your operations and needs and wants, in addition to the different CIP programs. So that's what I understood, was the quasi-direction given to me at that meeting a month ago.
That would be helpful for me. So thank you very much.
Mr. Moss?
Just two observations. One for the city manager. Because all these things that require debt have to be seen in light of our overall debt strategy and our bonding limits and our criteria and our bond rating. So I think Mr. Blushy was right on target when he said holistic look, because in the end, as I've mentioned many times here in my discussions with Mr. Power, our ability to borrow money is now our biggest constraint when we don't have the cash to pay for it. So we have to be careful about how we allocate debt against the things that generate revenue versus the things that generate expenses. And so, and plus, we have this big flood protection program, which will consume a large percentage of our discretionary borrowing capacity. And the other thing I always say about surveys, when you never tell people a price and they're just giving an answer, it's like asking a teenager something. When it's unconstrained by a choice, how much income are you willing to give up to buy what you want? The answer is, not as informed as you think. And so in the end, we learned that during the bond referendum. I'm sure you people that were out there heard people very interested as much, okay, but how much does it cost? So I just think we always have to temper looking at surveys when people aren't presented with a bill. You know, how strong is the affinity between the want or the need and the wallet? So I just offer that as just an observation, given my recent experience out on the stump with the bond referendum.
So I have a request. With 40 undeveloped parks and 80 parks that don't have anything there, except maybe they're very limited to what they have. I know this is probably a lot of trouble, but we're going to a district system where each council member is going to have their own district. I would particularly like to see, and I think maybe some of my colleagues would like to find out, where those 120 parks are and where they are in each person's district.
The consultant is breaking those down by district. We will have that.
Yes, if we can, you know, get that so that we can know. And I know it's not official, but it very well may be.
Be close in the...
I think it's going to be close enough so that we can kind of know, you know, where these things are. So we know what the needs are in each person's district. So if we could possibly get that, I would really appreciate it.
And hold on a second. And Vice Mayor, are you talking about current districts?
No.
Okay, understood.
The future ones that we think we're going to be getting.
You understand that?
Yes, and we're doing it on the current ones, because we don't have the maps, because that's what the consultant has. But if we get new maps, we'll be easily able to update it.
I think that's going to happen.
Yeah, it's a touch base we can.
Fairly soon, and... So you don't have to do it today.
Yeah.
I think we're going to know something fairly soon, and I think the council member is going to want to...
We'll get that to the consultant, and we'll have the numbers crunched on the nude lines.
But I think this has been a really great discussion from everybody. Anybody else?
Yes, here, please. Thank you so much, Mr. Kirschman. And I want to make sure we put the focus back in Centerville, because that's where we started, and we have to make sure that we're staying focused. This presentation was requested by myself because when I talked to several council members on the phone during our last budget season and the previous budget season, questions were asked, well, did we see the study? Can we have more information? So I wanted to reiterate, and some people have already said they did see it. So that's good. We're seeing it once again. But that's the purpose of reiterating the study. So thank you for bringing the information forward. And again, still focusing on Centerville, this request for the Centerville Rec Center precedes me. This was something that was a request by residents before I got here. This is their top priority when I got here. It's still a top priority. And I think what's been clear to me is that it hasn't been made a priority here in our budget process and in council. And so I would like to continue, because I do represent Centerville, and I do have to represent the needs of the people who live in my district. And I don't think this matter should be put on the back burner any longer. I think the good news is, we know how we address an eat a elephant. You do it piece by piece. And so the ask for this budget season is a small piece, $5 million, to get things started. Now, can I ask you a question? In terms of this whole process in building, funding a rec center, how, what's the timeframe or time span? Is it, I don't know if it's three or four years, or...
So different aspects of the project take different amounts of time. But in terms of design, so finalizing where it's going to go and what's going to go in there, doing the public engagement, and getting at least the concept drawings, but not starting construction drawings, is a solid year, two years?
And then...
I'll split the difference, year and a half, 18 months.
And then after that, you have to, of course, break ground and do different things.
And you go off for construction drawings, that can be almost a year. And then you would break ground the following year, and you're probably looking at an 18-month to two-year construction, two years.
Uh-huh, so two, four, about two years.
So you're looking at a five, you're looking at five years from, you know, go.
Okay.
And you can chunk that up. You can do two years and wait a little while. You can certainly wait a little while between concept before going to construction drawings. But I would say, once you go to construction drawings, you want to have the money to construct. You don't want to spend the money on construction drawings and not be able to build right after that.
Absolutely. And so, in that period, up to five years, a lot of things is going, will change. The cost, construction, all of those things are going to change. We, I think we're smart enough to know that. You know, the cost for today will be different five years later. There, we may see an increase or a decrease in cost. We don't know. But what's clear to me is we do need to start somewhere. The good news is also that we can do big and small projects. We can do cricket. We can also address our parks, maintenance. We can do all those different things. We don't have to just focus and be narrow on one thing. We're a big city with big accomplishments, big ideas. We can do both. One of the other things I'd also like to add, in terms of the community, this conversation has not gone out to the public. But that's something that after that $5 million is entered into the budget, and as we're moving forward and proceeding, that conversation will go out to the public, because we need to know what you think, what your desire is, where you would like to see the rec center, because this is a collaborative effort. And we definitely want to include the public here. And so, in terms of all these things, I just want to make sure that my colleagues keep an open mind. There has never been a budget season, and there will never be a budget season, where we don't have competing interests, where we don't have issues with flooding and maintenance, and all of those things are a given. We will always have those items to deal with. But I can say, we always get through them. In all of the other districts, we always, no matter what the competing interest was, no matter what the challenge, no matter what the rate of inflation, no matter what the cost, we got a rec center built in each of those districts. This is nothing new. So I would say, keep an open mind. Let's move forward. Let's have a plan. There is a plan in terms of how to fund the rec center. Certainly happy to provide the information to you. But again, we should definitely move forward, strategy, strategize, plan. We don't necessarily have to have the Big Mac, the biggest of the big. We don't necessarily have to have that. But we do need something for our residents in the city of Virginia Beach and the Centerville District. They've been asking and continue to ask for this recreation center. So thank you so much for your patience, colleagues. Thank you so much for your input. Keep an open mind. Let's move forward. Thank you, Mr. Kirschman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. A great presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time Taylor Adams will provide a presentation on the Bonnie Road development, which council is voting for, in next week? Taylor, next week, or in a couple of weeks? Yes.
Welcome, and I'm glad you're back from being across the pond.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Glad to be with you tonight. Good afternoon, council. And thank you, and thank you for allowing me to take the manager with me. I'm glad to be back. So, here we go. So this is a, this is an item that you all have heard about previously. And I'll just stop here and give you, give you in the public a moment to review the disclosures. We are very excited with where this project is, and thank you for your willingness to both hear this briefing, but also let us bring it back to you this evening for consideration, as we really would like to get this one across the finish line here at year-end. Our request here is to amend the purchase agreement. You'll recall, this is a piece of property that is, that's on Bonnie Road. So as we don't have the broader map here, just to orient the public, we're talking Bonnie Road. This is just off the intersection of Bonnie and Independence, and immediately north of the 264 interchange with the Independence. On June 4th, we, city council declared that 11.77 acres as excess property. There was a purchase price that was derived from an appraisal of $2.312 million. And the proposed development was an office park consisting of three buildings totaling, we thought at the time, 181,000 square feet with related facilities. It's important to note that our contract with the developer at that point indicated or suggested that the developer would be able to develop all of the property outside of the 50-foot buffer associated with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board guidance on Thalia Creek, which is, which is immediately, I suppose, call it, it would look, it looks like north on this picture, but in effect, I think it's actually a little north and a little east. But that said, after working through the process with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board, it was determined that the setback would be 100 feet. That, as you can see, that is the longest edge of the property and significantly impacts the developability of the site. It's also important to note that your appraisal was based on the assumption that we could, that we would be able to develop in those 50 feet. So all of that additional real estate is effectively lost value for the developer at this point. As we continue to work through there, we saw that there were stormwater design issues and infrastructure costs associated with this site. Also, one of the things that a project the city already had underway was the Thalia Creek Greenway, which is an important part of our trail system through this area, and offered some constraint on, you can see the green line there on the edge of the site as well. So, fast forward to today, we're doing everything that we can to salvage what value is left on this site and what developable acreage we have. We had hoped that there would be about seven acres of developable real estate here. We think that we're going to end up with just over half, just over half of that number. Now, that said, though, we're going through this in an effort to deliver whatever value we possibly can. So one of the things that we are asking to do first, going back to the prior slide when we were talking about the loss of developable real estate on that edge of the property, because we obviously want to, we want to work with with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board. We're asking for a reduction in value to $1.7 million that could be, that basically would account for that loss. The other thing is, there was, there was associated with this project when it was considered to be an office project with a mix of uses, an EDIP grant through the Development Authority for $625,000 to build city infrastructure that was needed. Now, that infrastructure was to be used for stormwater maintenance, to, basically to make stormwater improvements on the edge of the property, to help with wetland mitigation, to ensure, to bring improvements to all of the property in that site, to provide a second point of ingress and egress to help us avoid congestion at Bonnie Road, and then further to make a sewer improvement that would serve the entire region. We are asking, we all think that that, we believe that that is public infrastructure that is important, not just for this project, but for everything in that area because of the improvements that it makes. And so, we are asking that that be maintained one of two ways. What I, one of two things can happen. As we continue to do the research, then, one, we may find that there is enough developable acreage to continue. However, we don't think that's possible. We think, we think that it is, that what we will likely find is that we can get the one multifamily project in there, and that the rest of the land will not be, will not necessarily be buildable, and might not make sense to ask Mr. Cutchins to buy. In that case, what we would say, this $625,000 could be rebated to him so that he's only buying the land that we need from him. It could be used to build a regional BMP, perhaps if you told us to, that would serve the entire region. Alternatively, we can use it to build the infrastructure. We don't know what that is yet. We don't know what the right answer is, but we also want to get this deal done. And so the request is, can we, we would like to press forward with, basically, holding that $625,000 aside while we complete our research, and then basically take the road that the market will deliver based on maximizing the value of the project. That is, and so with that, that would be the amended purchase agreement and the grant to replace the EDIP with a credit against the purchase for cost incurred associated with infrastructure. That was a lot, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Moss?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to give Taylor a lot of credit for taking the general guidance from council earlier on how he could get the yes and find a way to get the yes. I want to compliment you on that. But it does get back to the larger point about, which we couldn't discuss on our earlier forum, the need for a central... on our earlier forum, the need for a central, for a CIP project that just talks to regional BMPs where we can see aggregately where the requirement is and how we're feeling that, and on a, on a citywide basis, and how each project fits into that larger strategy. But I do appreciate.
Thank you.
The yes, and this is workable, and I know this, I think, sends a constructive message to the development community that we can meet a timing need and still serve the public interest, and thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I take that as a proceed, and I, I go with that.
Thank you all very much.
It's time to get this deal done.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It's been lingering.
It has. You know, this was a deal that was already in the hopper when I became your development director. And so we've been actively working this for three and a half years. I would, I would love to see this one cross the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Taylor. Always so good.
Thank you very much.
Council, if you don't mind, our city clerk has, did you want to say something, Rocky? Anyway, our city clerk had something she wanted to ask us about our procedures of our meetings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So in discussions with, with Vice Mayor and then, and the manager, and just trying to figure out how we want to proceed with WebEx for the new year, we're having very few WebEx speakers, maybe one or two at best each meeting. So just wanted to, to put that out there. We will be submitting the ad for the January 7th meeting next Monday, and just wanted to find out if there was some discussion that needed to be had just moving forward with WebEx.
So to give an example, tonight with open mic, the staff person that does it has to stay way till the very end of the meeting for one, for one speaker.
The engineer will need to stay from VBTV, and then the IT individual will need to stay as well, yes.
And now that we can have open meetings, I don't think there's quite the need for WebEx. And I personally think that it's, it's time to just go to our regular meeting stages starting in January. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm just, I'm okay with that, but I would like us to continue to research because I am certain that our manpower-intensive approach is not the approach required by today's technology, and that there is another solution that wouldn't require people to stay. So I would hope that we could look for a way, because I think today, people don't want to travel to participate. And our elderly population who doesn't drive at night are disenfranchised by having to come down here. But I also agree the way we're currently doing it. But I can't believe in today's age and technology that the approach that we have is the approach that is the possible. And so I think we need to be doing some, whether it's requests for proposals, but we need to have a way, because I would love the day when no one had to expend energy to come down here to express an opinion to this body. That would be ideal. And I don't, many of you, but I conduct virtual discussions with people all over the globe, and it works. So why should someone have to leave their house to come down here to affect? But I realize that, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, that we really don't want to have to be keeping staff for one, but we need to find an approach that works with no staff at all, but allows people to work and participate in our meetings from home.
Thank you. Mr. Tower.
Yeah, I just would second what Mr. Moss said. It seems to me we're going in the wrong direction if we cut off ability to participate virtually. It's here, it's not going away. I think in business, we may think we go back to the way things were, but that's not, it's not going, going to happen. And we have people who we need to hear from. It's not just them being able to participate, it's us being able to, to get that without, I mean, we miss something if we don't accommodate the people who can't participate for whatever reason. So I would encourage, again, ask the city manager to please undertake another look at what our technology is and bring to us ideas about how we can do it better, quicker, cheaper, less manpower, personnel. But I certainly would not want to turn away from it until we've really exhausted that we've, we've got technology. I think the world is going in the, in the other direction. We're all glad to have people here again. I'm, I mean, it's like, not that this is a performative group by any means, but we all just like company, and we like knowing we've got, people are free to come and visit. But I certainly want to accommodate those people who find it more convenient to give their opinions. And it, they don't have to be a hardship. I mean, I think it's, I think we all benefit from that. I, I just second that. I, I do not want to abandon having remote participation by speakers. I just want to find a better way to do it.
Right. Well, Mr. Moss said for now, we could stop WebEx until we find something better. Is that okay with you?
Well, it is, although maybe we need to look at the, how we schedule it. If it's keeping people here until too late at night, maybe we ought to be thinking about that. In the interim, given the number of people, I'll certainly accede to, to canceling the WebEx for now, but I'm not happy about it, really. I'm not happy about keeping two people working till late at night for one speaker either. I think that's impractical as well. But I think part of the problem is I'm, I'm not confident that our WebEx is, is getting, not everybody that would like to participate finds our WebEx process to be one that is inviting, forgiving, manageable, and that, you know, it's a chicken and egg sort of thing. But I don't, I don't blame it all on people's disinterest in participating remotely. I think it's, it's, it's the system we've got and our lack of ability to promote it, because it is what it is. And if, you know, it's pretty intimidating to be on the other end of a WebEx participation right now. I have a feeling there, there are ways to get more people involved.
Ms. Wooton.
I just also would like to say how I see that even though through the pandemic, it's a very difficult thing, out of it has come the benefit of the remoting in, the video monitoring, or the video calling, if you will, which is an added benefit to the residents who cannot be here. There were, even before the pandemic, there were residents who said they could not get here. There was difficulty coming out. So I think it's an added benefit to keep WebEx, although we might want to consider that whole platform if there's something better, because there are some difficulties with that platform. We might want to look at that. But I would suggest that we have some type of plan going forward if we're going to stop the WebEx participation. Have a plan going forward for the future so that we can integrate it back in so that people have that opportunity to participate remotely if they have to. Also, they're still, we're still in a pandemic. They're coming out with new variants all the time. I just saw a news release about many leaders coming out to speak about the new variant that's out now that's very deadly. And so there are people who are not comfortable with coming out here. They're still not comfortable with coming out here. And so if they would like to stay home and still participate in the process, they should have the opportunity. So going forward, let's have a plan in place for the future to integrate it back into the system, because it's, it's all about flexibility, transparency for the community, for residents, and they should always feel like they have an option to participate. Also, as we look at the, the environment at large, as we look at society, people are keeping Web, well, not exactly WebEx, but they're keeping video conferencing platforms in place because it just adds more value. It adds more people to the conversation. So let's make sure we do that. Let's continue to add more value and keep people engaged, even if it's remotely. They have that, they should have that opportunity.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would just consider as a recommendation for this council, this body, is that being that WebEx doesn't get a lot of speakers as well, that we start off with WebEx first. So our engineers have to stay all night, and then after we finish with the WebEx speakers, they could leave. Then those who are in person can finish up the night's speaking. I think that would try to help solve the issue that we're facing here with keeping personnel on too late, as well, as well as having people who sign on early, being able to let them speak, get them out the way. There's not a lot of people anyway that sign up on WebEx, and that way we can keep it around, don't have to get rid of it. I think it's a, it's a solution that could fit our entire, entire problem here. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Miss, Madam Vice Mayor, I do.
Yes.
I think there are enough inherent, I appreciate what Mr. Rouse said, but I do also think there are enough inherent flaws with the WebEx program that it really necessitates a look at another system rather than continuing to use the system we have, in my opinion. But since we're having what appears to be a robust discussion about public engagement and the new technologies that we're enjoying, I want to say that I, for me, I think we should be looking for ways to expand access rather than to reduce access. And so I would definitely support the comments that have been made to that effect before. But I also think we have an obligation to think about the tone of civil discourse, not only within this body in this room, but that's occurring around the country. And I just want to point out some of the deficiencies I think we've experienced with WebEx that I would like to see possibly addressed in a new system. And one is that would include video. Because I think when audio exclusively is used, it's permissive in some cases for people to disassociate themselves with the conversations that are happening in the room. And I think some of the commentary we receive as a result is more reminiscent of what we see on social media than I think the elevated dialogue that occurs in this room. And that's one of the, I think, problems that I've had with the WebEx program is because you are more comfortable saying certain things on a keyboard, and maybe you're more, some people are more comfortable saying certain things by phone. And then when you have to put your face and your name to what you're saying, then there's more accountability to what you say. And this is, we're talking about the public's business. We're talking about issues that are very important to our city, and I think they're deserving of all the dignity and gravity that comes with that level of accountability, such as we experience when you walk into this room and you state your name and you make your case or share your opinion. So that would be one thing that I would ask that you look for in a new system is possibly including a video component for those reasons. Thank you.
So that our clerk has clear direction, which I'm not sure, sort of I do. If we don't mind, I think we have two choices to discontinue WebEx until we get something better, or to keep WebEx until we get something better. So, Mr. Branch, could you give me your choice?
Mr. Rouse, as a question.
I just want to make sure we are focused in what we're, we're talking about. Well, as I understood it, the issue was the fact that personnel will stand around a lot longer because there's not a lot of people on WebEx. Now, WebEx, the problem with WebEx is a different issue, it's a different discussion. I'm open to finding new platforms for WebEx, and I think that's a different conversation that we all have. I think we all understand WebEx has its issues, so we can definitely find a different platform. But I thought the issue at hand was trying to understand, making sure, using personnel time wisely and efficiently. And so from that, from that point, I'm open to keeping WebEx around, but moving WebEx speakers to the beginning of speaker portion instead of the end of speaker portion.
Okay, well, we'll put that down as for you.
Just ask a point of clarification, if I could. It's discontinued as of our meeting that's for January, correct? I just want to make sure, just clarify what we're doing.
Because she, she needs direction.
Yep, yep, I agree with you. I just want to make sure that was the question.
Okay, then we'll.
I'm good.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yeah. I, I like what, what Councilmember Rouse said, that if you could front-load it, then you could get folks out of here and just front-load the WebEx process and, and let folks know that the WebEx is, it concludes at 19:30 or 20:00 hours, whatever time it is. And, and you could still use that platform until we can find something new.
So you want to keep it for now?
Yeah, keep it for now, until we figure out, because we certainly need outlook.
I do not, for this reason. Open mic, if that's the way it is, then you got to move open mic to the front. So we go on the air, we go off there, we're back in the air. But that I could live with, though, disjointed as it is. But what I have difficulty, and maybe other people don't, so maybe it's just me and a function, is you hear a comment about an issue because it's on open mic, and now it's an hour later, you're now on the issue, but the comment that was being made isn't fresh in your mind. And so are you making sure that when you're voted on that thing, you're, is it having the same impact? So it's that integration part. And I just think, so I'm with what's being requested, I'm in favor of. 14th of December is our last WebEx, but knowing that the manager isn't going to take months and months and months, we're going to, I think, with an RFP, something I think industry could be quite responsible. I would like to think in less than six months, we could have something.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, a lot of this is also this building and the outdated technology in this building. I think this problem goes away or can be handled better in the new building. You know, and I think one of the decisions that was made was the choice of, do we upgrade this system, knowing that we're going to buy and fancy new technology in a new system that will better accommodate most of this video conferencing-like stuff?
My only point is, most stuff today is wireless and highly supports wireless, and wireless doesn't care about what your building is. It could be outside. So I'm just saying, but I understand that that's the case. But to Mrs. Wooton's point, I do think that we just want the public to know that what, we are going to have something, and it's going to be more robust. And if we're fortunate, we'll be able to have video too. And at a minimum, when we move into our new building, it will be in place.
Yep.
Like, that's our objective. And if it can be wireless and sooner, then we'll do it sooner.
Ms. Henley. Do you have an opinion?
Not, oh, you're asking on an opinion on, oh, we'll be here all day. It doesn't matter.
Mr. Jones.
Frankly, until we move into the new building, I believe Mr. Rouse has come up with a reasonable proposal. So I, that's what I would like to do.
Okay. All right, Mr. Branch.
I'll go with Mr. Rouse's idea.
Michael.
Yeah, it, it appears that's the direction we're headed. I, I think it's a reasonable proposal. I have, I do have some concerns about the use of WebEx, but I think we're talking about a shortened time, so I'm happy to support that. I wouldn't support it for longer than that. I think we need to discontinue use of WebEx.
Well, and open mic, open mic does complicate it. I mean, we still can't front it, front-load those speakers for open mic.
I also think that, I mean, I have concerns about, so I'm, I'm a reluctant, I'm a very reluctant yes. I think I have concerns about the fact that we're front-loading people who are dialing in and putting them in front of people who have taken time to come here, which I do have some reservations about. But I think it's a short-term, you know, proposed solution. And I'm kind of like Ms. Henley, I'm good either way.
I have those concerns too. Mr. Tower.
Yeah, I, I make, make with apologies to those who come here and continue, plan to come here for backloading you. I would say it's temporary. I hope we will have something worked out by April. Thank you. I, I go along with that.
Ms. Wooton.
I just, just have a quick question. What is the expectation for the position for the person who stays back to accommodate WebEx? Is the expectation that this is a part of your hours? Or, or has that expectation never been defined?
That's a question more for you, Patrick. They're not my staff.
Counsel, I, that's not a concern of mine. If council stays here, we're here.
Okay. So, well, hold on a second. What about this, if we're worried about the staff staying late, the only ones we need to front-end for open mic are the open mic people. We don't need to front-end the people on open mic that are, that have come to speak on agenda items.
So open mic's the first thing you do on your agenda? That's my point, or you have to cut it and cut out.
No, 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 open mic's always at the end. So.
In other words, a person on a, on WebEx would be televised.
So open mic is the only one I would front-end.
Right, but my point is, that means before we convene the formal meeting, because we just, we adjourn for open mic, we would have an open mic session for open mic for people who are on the WebEx.
No, no, just, just hear the open, the WebEx people first on open mic, and then the other people.
Yeah, that's right.
But still, keep open mic at the end.
Oh, well, then the engineer's still here.
Vice Mayor Wilson, if, the point of the recommendation was, and not to cause any inconvenience to those who take their time to come down here to our chambers, was the fact, and I thought it was a major point, that we only get very little WebEx, people sign up for WebEx. sign up for WebEx. So although it would be an inconvenience, would be a slight inconvenience, and not one that would be, they're waiting an hour or 45 minutes here. So that was, that was the recommendation.
But they're in their homes and comfortably sitting in their homes, and they can go get a drink of water, or snack, or whatever, while everybody else is sort of stuck. That's...
Yeah. Madam Vice Mayor, if I, if I could make another, just a suggestion or a thought, I think the, maybe potentially just moving the front, the front speakers, WebEx speakers to the front for open mic would be something I'd be comfortable with. But on the other hand, we're all here. So I appreciate the people who, the folks who stay to operate WebEx. But department directors are here, city manager is here, council members are here, clerk, Ms. Chelias is here. Maybe we just leave it as it is until we can find another solution.
Since I think we're all over the map, I think it's a good suggestion. Is that okay with everyone? Now, does that give you clarity?
That we will remain with WebEx in January, maybe before we tell there's another solution in progress, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I heard for the new building, figure out something other than WebEx.
Exactly. All right. City Council?
Oh, the liaison report?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Wooton and I do have a report that's related to the 531 Memorial Committee. In December, the council adopted a resolution to define composition of the 531 Memorial Committee. At a time in the near future, we hope to present a slate of recommendations to the body for consideration for appointment to the committee. But we discovered a few things in those discussions we wanted to share with the body. One was that, according to the resolution creating the commission, council member liaisons would be considered as voting members. And we determined that in accordance with our current practices for liaisons, that actually we should serve in the more traditional role of a liaison and not become voting members. And what, making that change would allow is for additional qualified and contributing citizens to be included in the 10 to 12-member composition that wouldn't include council members. The other request that we have is that the consultant who is a liaison to the family members of victims and survivors from 531 be made an ex officio non-voting member. In the current composition, they're, they would be voting members. And we think it's more appropriate that the consultant who works for the city would be there by virtue of their position, and that they would be a non-voting member of the committee. So we will bring forward a resolution to make these changes at next week's council meeting. And I'd like to thank the city attorney, Mr. Stiles, and also Mr. Ingram for their work in formulating this change for us. And I would defer to my colleague, Councilmember Wooton, for any additional clarifying remarks.
No, I would certainly, I appreciate you bringing out that information and bringing it to my attention today about how we normally serve on committees. We normally don't vote, we're just there as liaisons. I think the points you've brought out are very pertinent, and I do concur that we should move forward in that fashion in consideration of this resolution that's being passed out.
Does anyone have any questions?
Are we adding, are you requesting that we add this to tonight's agenda?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Next week.
Okay, very good. Just want to make sure.
Anybody else?
From Bikes and Trailways, I think you all got the report. Maybe you may not have a chance to look at their end of report. It came from Bikes and Trailways Commission. Just want to bring to your attention that they are requesting, and I'm sure the city manager will see that, they're asking for $5 million in next year's budget for seed money. So they have already have participation money for grants, and they are out there still. And of course, and I had told them that they're in line with a lot of other priorities, so I haven't made any promises. But I did say I would share with this body what their request was, and certainly the Southern, Norfolk Southern Railway card, that bike trail is high on their priority list. To get something started there at a much lower cost than what was the initial $55 million proposal, which I think is a long way out there in a land far, far away. But I think there's something we can do at much less cost. I just want to bring that to your attention. If you have any question about the report, please let me know. I'll pass those on, or you can gauge the group directly. Thank you. That's all I had on liaisons.
Mr. Branch?
Well, I, along with Councilman Tower, attended the RAC Resort Advisory Commission meeting last week. And at that meeting, they're, they voted to have us consider purchasing this projection art technology, which would be used at the 24th Street Park primarily, but they can develop their own films. Some of it could be involved in Virginia Beach and in line with our history and our 60th anniversary. So I hope we get some more information on that. We were originally talking about putting it in the CIP, but it takes about five or six months to acquire this, this projection art. And so if we're going to have it for the season for 2022, we need to order it sooner than later. So hopefully we hear something about that. And it's, it's not a great cost. And in fact, it's at the 24th Street Park. It could substitute for some of the programming that goes there, which would be a cost savings on that. So, but one of our members, Randy Thompson, saw this at the Alamo in San Antonio and said it was more memorable than the Alamo. And I think the cost we're talking about is somewhere around $450,000, $500,000,000 for the whole shebang. But they did vote on that at the, at the Resort Advisory Commission meeting. And I hope we do hear some more about it at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tower?
I'll just add, since I was around for some Resort Advisory Commission meetings and subcommittee meetings before Mr. Branch got reappointed council, that we have had a number of meetings with the folks that have the vendors of this equipment, who also are very expert in its, everything about it, not just selling the equipment, but the display and maintaining it and the like. All, I've been very impressed with all of their presentations. I think for the investment, this could be a really tremendous asset to the beach. I think it's something that would bring, you know, we spent this morning talking about issues about, in a, in a resort area, you have two, two issues. One is, what do you do to entertain the people that are here so that they have the kind of experience that, one, they want to come back and they tell their friends and neighbors about it? And two, what kind of experiences do you have that will actually attract people to come who might not otherwise come? This is one, I think, that really hits both of those very, very hard. It is, it's new, it's different, it's dramatic, but it is sustainable in the sense that you're not locked into a, either a location or a program. It's not cheap, it's the upfront costs are significant, but it's got a lot of support within the resort community, and I think for, for good reason. I think we ought, we ought to get the, get a presentation that council can see, too. If it's, if council's interested in having it, we could certainly arrange it. The folks that, as I said, that have made presentations to RAC have done a good job, and that's kind of hard to convey without the pictures and the like. Although it's hard to convey even with pictures of being in the presence of it, apparently. Those people that have been to San Antonio and seen it at the Alamo are uniformly impressed with it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Moss, City Council comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. Is this what we're doing? I'm going to start off first with then Virginia Beach Development Authority. I'll start off with that one first. You know, you may recall when we had, and I took this as a lesson learned from our, from Mr. Belushi at my service on the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, when they ran into a very, I'll say it, less than favorable audit, I guess would be the nicest way of saying it. They had a number of deficiencies that they had to work with. And I have to say that when they developed an action plan and did that in conjunction, if implementation with the city auditor, and gave us quarterly reports, they really turned around their organization. And a matter of fact, they're a fine example. Their, their performance and occupancy rates, I can't say enough of how the leadership team has responded. The Virginia Beach Development Authority deals with much more fungible money on a much greater scale than the Development Authority. And I just want to remind you of some of the findings, which is why I think there needs to be a like action plan. The Development Authority needs to develop an action plan, how they're going to remedy these findings. They ought to be working with the auditor along the way to look at how those things. And they ought to come back and tell us on a quarterly basis, because we are accountable to the public, that our money and processes are being accountable. And these findings suggest, for whatever reason, you can tell your own clue, didn't happen, but the facts are the facts. But those findings were, one, inadequate supporting documentation for machinery and tools. Remember that brief, talking about accounting for the money and what they got paid for and reimbursed for versus the documentation. No effective process in place to verify the recipient's performance. So they're getting paid, but we don't know if they met the performance criteria. But they're getting money. I don't think that's what we would do if it was our own money, and it is the people's money. Filling of job positions not according to the EID policy. These aren't positions on the authority, these are positions of the people getting the grants. Not a good showing. Inadequate supporting documentation for job expansion. We go out and tell the people, we're spending money, we're growing jobs, but there's no proof. It's like I say, it's the vaporware. You tell me, but then go to show me, there's no show me there. So not exactly the Missouri State. And I'm sure there is, but if you can't prove it, you don't get credit for it. But you're spending money. And this is one, the exact amount of incentive funds available is currently, that's at the time of this report, is unknown to the Development Authority. Not knowing how much money they have available to use, you would think would be fundamental on any board's mind to know that. And so I think there's some other ones in here, but my point being is, I think we should ask the Development Authority. I don't think it has to be some formal vote. I think they can understand the message through Mr. Taylor, the city manager, that we expect them, like we did with the Community Beach Development Corporation, to put together an action plan, work with our city auditor, and tell us how these deficiencies have been corrected, so that we can go out and tell people that once we had this, what action did we take as a council? I think we owe them an action plan and a completion record, and I would ask this body's support in that regard. I don't think it needs a formal vote. I just think the manager needs to know that that's our desire.
John, I don't think they would have any problem doing that.
I don't think they should either. That was item one. Item two is not one I'm trying to reconcile today, but I'd just like to communicate in advance, because I have done it several times. This is the taxpayer dividend, which was in your, passed around as well. We've been giving, gets back to my discussion, we've been giving bonuses to the school boards giving bonuses, the city council's giving bonuses. Well, I think we can give a taxpayer dividend, and they can get a bonus, too, given the amount of revenues that are on, on hand for us to use, which is another item that we got from the Budget Office on how much money we may have, which doesn't deal with under execution. I'll talk about that in a minute. But I am proposing to give a $13.2 million rebate on people's personal property tax. Good news is, that's easily implementable and executable by Commissioner of Revenue, because there's already a line where we show getting credit from the state for the money they contribute towards the bill. There would just be another line in there, getting a credit from the city and reducing their bill further. I had looked into real estate, but apparently our, our IT system for real estate is not very agile or adaptable. But more importantly, I think this approach by going to only people who actually pay personal property tax, so people who are exempt for its military or elderly or whatever they're paying, they wouldn't be getting a rebate, but also they're not paying the tax. And also, it tends to help people more at the lower end of the income scale, because that comes at a bad time of year for most people, when it comes in May, and they got to pay that lump sum. And you can tell that's true by looking at how much people have to pay in penalties. On personal property is a much higher percentage of the collection than is penalty on real estate. So I'm going to be having this on the agenda for a vote on the third meeting in January, because that'll give me more time to digest talking with the Budget Office, this report, to see if there isn't a better combination of revenue. And I think also that is part of the larger discussion on what we do with the $54.9 million reversion request from the school board. The school board by then should have explained to us how they're spending their $100 million in unencumbered Federal CARES Act money. They think the CFO said they would have that to us, or to, at least to their board, by mid-January, if I remember correctly, when she, over the joint session. And then we'll have a better handle, even refined estimates, on our under execution for this budget year, because clearly if we have about 14% vacancies across the city, and also that we, I think we baked in about a 3% attrition when we adopted the budget, so we're still 11% of unexecuted salaries due to vacancies. Some of that state money that we can't recapture, but they're probably, at least is, discounting that about 8%. So if you look at that, that's probably in the 30 to 40 million dollar range of under execution just on payroll alone. That's probably not off, that's pretty close. So I think this is very affordable. I think it lines up with the governor-elect's message. The state's looking at, what, $6.7 billion in the next biennial budget that's over and above the revenue forecast that they originally were working with. So they're looking at, what, you know, possibly reducing the grocery tax, increasing the standard deduction, and some other things. And I think that we also are looking at very robust revenue projections as well. And I think we're in a position to do a lot of stuff on that list we looked at earlier, and also give our taxpayers, it's a modest, it's nothing close, no $1,000, not going to give $1,000 to 165,000 households, that's not doable. But it will show that we understand and do care, and we can give a, I'll call it a token, but at least it communicates an empathy for the stress that our residents at large are under. And we got to be looking for even more opportunities in the adoption of next year's budget to also look for tax relief, because just as department heads of unfunded needs, families have unfunded needs. And I think those also need to be considered in our process. But that, as I shared in an earlier amendment letter to you, that will be on the agenda the third meeting in January, as we have the issue with the school boards, and we can have that larger discussion among all the revenues that are out there and all the competing demands that we have, because I know there's some other things we might be discussing today. I have one other issue in this regard. Also, I sent out a memo talking about our timeline relative to, because remember the legislative package, Mr. Rouse and I withdrew our two items. One was about employment, if could city employees run and hold public office. And the other one's replacing special, appointments of vacancies with special elections. And there was some concern about, good enough education, where's the people's participation? So I laid out a timeline that will allow each council member to identify the community groups we need to reach out to. We'll be doing our own distribution, a whole timeline to make sure that there's adequate public participation, so that we could bring this to a vote in late March, early April, to place those two questions on the ballot in November. And we could let the people decide if those are changes they want to make to our charter. And if they do, we then have time to include it in our legislative package, and we'll be acting on the people's decision and not necessarily our own interest. And I think ultimately, it's their government. So I just want to let you know, we will be following up on that timeline that I presented in a memo, so everyone will have a chance to say they could express their views, and all the public had an opportunity to participate before we vote in late March and April. And we will be executing according to the timeline previously provided. And one last item, if I may, Vice Mayor, is once we, once it's past January 15th, and we actually see the governor, then Governor Youngkin's budgetary proposals, if in fact, if he does bring forth those tax modifications to give tax relief to businesses and residents in the Commonwealth, I'll be bringing forth a resolution to be supportive of his package to provide tax relief to our residences, realizing that that will have a revenue impact on the city, but likewise, the economy's having a revenue impact on the families and businesses in our community. impact on the families and businesses in our community. Thank you very much.
So I want the council to know that Mr. Jones and I are planning on meeting with the leadership of the school board. Um, Mr. Jones seems to have the date on his calendar, but for some reason, I don't have it on mine yet, but, uh...
Twelve December.
Okay. So anyway, we'll be talking about their, their funds and that sort of thing, so...
When you do, I just want to give you an anecdotal example, and I'm sure all of you have read through it like I have, but one of their proposals for their, their reversion, funds for which they are not entitled, I want to make sure that's clear. All the money I'm referring to is money that they are not entitled to under the Funding Formula Agreement. But they have three and a half million dollars to put synthetic turf on Ocean Lake High School and, and Kensington High School athletic field for three and a half million dollars. That is just one example, but there are many, and I've, you know, I've shared all those in the letter, so I hope you, you actually engage in actively about the content of what they're using their money for.
Well, I have asked Mr. Duhany to work on all of their funding sources, you know, from CARES Act, ARPA, and the, their own funds to, so that we know everything that we're talking about. And so he's supposed to have all of that together before we walk in the door.
Putting it together now.
Thank you. Okay, um, now, Mrs. Henley has a presentation.
Yes, I do. Uh, I think it was about three weeks ago when I, I asked you all if I would be able to talk a little bit at this meeting about the sustainability plan that the city council adopted back in twenty thirteen. And the thought that it would be something, uh, that we might possibly want to take is looking at this again to update that, that plan. Uh, I think you all have a little, uh, packet at your, your desk. Uh, there was a little slide presentation that's probably not loaded, so you can just look at the, the, um, papers as you have them. Well, in twenty thirteen, we undertook an extensive public involvement program to develop what we called a community plan for a sustainable future. I served as a city council liaison on a steering committee, which included a wide range of staff and representatives from organizations and agencies around the city. It was definitely intended to be a community plan. And through wide discussion, the plan was developed around ten major areas called elements. And each of these was then developed with a vision statement. And then those were further defined with a broad goals and objectives to achieve those visions. Together, these elements, goals, and objectives provide the framework for the plan and the roadmap for the city and the community that would be a pathway for the future. Well, the pillars of sustainability are social, economic, and environmental. And they're sometimes called the triple bottom line. They are the pillars that provide the balance and serve as a filter to help as we evaluate actions. Actions that reach a triple bottom line are then fine tuned to balance the social, economic, and environmental, so that a desired outcome in one of these, uh, areas does not ignore or, uh, complicate the implications and needs of the other two. Well, revisiting the plan is a good step, just all by itself. But a great advantage to doing this is the opportunity that it will give us to reconnect with the community. With the extended period of isolation that we have had through the pandemic, we've missed the important element of connection. The city needs to reengage with our citizens, and I believe that this process will help us re-energize all of us as we look at these exciting opportunities that we have going forward. I have had the opportunity during the last couple of weeks to meet with some of the key staff people and also some of our, uh, citizens who were a part of the early, uh, work, uh, to talk about what milestones might be. First of all, uh, and I think you have this in, in the papers that you should have before you, uh, during this next month or so, staff would just look at the data that we have to look at these goals and objectives, and see if there are things that we obviously need to, to include, uh, such as the fact in twenty thirteen, I don't think we mentioned sea level rise at all, and wind energy was a, a distant future. But the big thing that, that I think this will provide for us, as I said, is the opportunity to reconnect with our citizens. And what we could do late January, early February, is to host some of our community conversations, which we have had in the past, and I think have been a great way for us to connect with the people. Facilitators in these community conversations help to lead discussions. And, and this would give us an opportunity to, uh, determine where our organizations are, because I think this has always been a strength of the city of Virginia Beach, that we have so many citizen organizations out there doing all kinds of things to help us, things that we could never do by ourselves. And I think this would allow us to sort of jumpstart getting back with these organizations, which I think has been such a, an, a void for us throughout the time of, of the pandemic. And so with these conver, uh, community conversations, I would suggest that we have one when we invite the members of our boards and commissions to come. We've done that in the past, and it's been very successful. And that we would also have one or two of these community conversations in which we invite all of our organizations that we can identify, civic leagues and everybody else, to send a representative, uh, so that we can, can hear and make these connections again. We would then have the, the benefit of what we have learned from these discussions with the community when we go to our retreat in February, and that when we deal with the budget, uh, later on. If we decide that, yes, we do want to continue with updating this plan, revisiting this plan, of course, this would give us the opportunity later on to, uh, incorporate all of the relevant information that we have gathered from our citizens and, and update this plan and have it sync with other plans that we're, we're doing as well. So I just, I just think if you look at this, um, the elements, the ten elements, the first one being people, it's the people I think that we really need to, um, to, to involve. And I think this plan was very good, uh, and unfortunately, some other things came along the way that caused us to not continue to update this as we should have. But I think if you look at the few pages that I did have reproduced for you to look at, you'll see the basis of the plan. But I, I hope that you can see the value in revisiting this now, and, and particularly having these opportunities to reconnect with our citizens and, uh, go forward with, uh, that, that relationship that I, I've really missed in not having the, the connections with all of our civic leagues and other organizations in the city that, that we have had in the past. So that's my, uh, my suggestion, and I, I hope it's one that you will, uh, will, will find beneficial.
So when, uh, when Barbara and I talked about this last night, uh, we used to have these community conversations at least once a year, and, and we always found them to be of such value, you know, to sit around these round tables and, and hear from our citizens and, and then walk around and listen to what everybody was saying. And we haven't done this in so long, and I always found it really good to do prior to our retreats. Um, do we, Mr. Duhany, do we have any idea when we're gonna have our retreat this year?
No, not, not this time, but we can touch base at the agenda review meeting and, and think that out, Vice Mayor.
So that's one thing, is to, uh, make sure we schedule this before retreat, because it is so helpful, for those of you that haven't done this, to hear the citizens before you walk into the retreat, and then also during budget time. So I'm so glad that Barbara has brought this up. I think it's really, really helpful. Did anybody else have any questions?
Well, can we all get a copy of the plan? This is just like a summary, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
If you want a copy, I'm sure we'll be glad to make them. We didn't want, I didn't want to hand those out until everybody thought, but I think as you look through this, you see that these are very, very basic goals and, and visions and so forth, and, and, um, very important if we're going to be able to look at where we are today and, and go forward. And it's pretty fascinating to see that, you know, these are still pretty much basic and, um, and work in with all these things that we're really trying to do at this time.
Mr. Moss?
I do recall that when we had this, and we had a retreat after we had this and were briefed on it, we did come up with six priorities that weren't the same as these, but these were subordinate too. So we really need to go back and get those six top priorities, because that was what the council at, and over, I think, two or three retreats, which is what, in fact, the documents tracked those six, and then it mentioned these ten things. But we really do need to relook at these ten things in the context of the six, and also rethink about, are the six still the right ones, and make sure the public sees the full context? Because I do remember there was a lot of discussion when we went from ten to six. So I just make sure we have the full picture.
Okay. Thank you so much for bringing that up. Okay, um, Mr. Jones is gonna handle our agenda review for us.
All right. Vice Mayor, could I just make one?
Oh, sure.
More comment on council comments. I just wanted to invite members of council and anybody in the public that's watching to attend our holiday light show at the Oceanfront this year. Uh, it is bigger and better than ever. Uh, I've got a lot of compliments on it, both on the show itself, a lot of new stuff, and on the traffic control. I think you'll find a minimal of backup if you, uh, if you come out to say it, it's there, it's signage is good. All of the, all of the, uh, all of the, uh, tickets are for sale online only, this thing. So get your, go online, get your, uh, tickets online, touchless system, and, uh, I'm sure all of the merchants and restaurants and others welcome you to the Oceanfront, as do the Vice Mayor and, uh, thank you.
I'm so glad you mentioned it. It is absolutely spectacular, and I get to see it every single night, every single night I get to see it.
You've got a firsthand view.
But I will tell you that one of my neighbors told me that it's not true, that you can't buy a ticket when you get to the gate.
Oh, really?
They will take your money when you get to the gate, just in case you didn't go online.
Good capitalists.
Okay.
Mr. Tell, were you going to mention the thing you passed out?
Oh, yes, I, I, I will. I wasn't sure whether to mention, I, I was waiting for Mr. Kellum to come in to see if he was, wanted to speak to it while we were here. I passed out two items, actually. One has to do with ordinances to, um, to amend the calendar year twenty twenty-two tax levy on personal property and machinery and tools to provide a taxpayer dividend. This is really, I'm just, was a stand-in for Mr. Moss. And the other one, which I've discussed, uh, with Mr. Kellum, are three items to amend section eighteen point five, two of the civic, city code pertaining to business license fees and taxes, uh, to provide revenue offsets, an ordinance to amend the twenty-two tax levy on personal property, oh, that, that one's already in there, and an ordinance to amend the calendar year tax levy on machinery and tools, uh, to set the tax rate for elderly and disabled persons and provide revenue offsets. Uh, I bring those to your attention. I hope you can vote on them at our next meeting.
Do I vote on them next week?
At our next meeting, yes. On the fourteenth.
I think we, I, I don't think I'd be prepared to vote on it next week.
You would not be prepared to vote on it next week?
Well...
That sounds like what?
It is, but there's a reason for it.
So I'm standing in for Mr. Kellum on this point. Um, the business license piece, which would raise the threshold for a flat fee, so instead of paying a percentage, you pay just a straight forty dollars. He said, in essence, he needs that in place January one, or you're gonna have to wait until next January. So if it is this will of council to have this in place for calendar year twenty-two, he is requesting action in December.
Well, I think we need a briefing on it or something to know what the impacts are and to need, we need to know more about it.
Mr. Kellum's here. If he's welcome to the podium, I would certainly welcome him to give that brief.
Two point... I know a little bit more about it.
Pardon me?
I know a little bit more about it.
Well, yeah.
But I'll let Mr. Kellum talk about it.
Mr. Kellum?
He briefed me on it. Thank you, Madam Vice, Vice Mayor and members. Um, I appreciate your consideration here, and I've discussed with, um, a few of you the, the possibility here to provide tax relief to small businesses, new businesses, and senior and disabled taxpayers. The imperative and the logistics presented by helping small businesses is because we need to have the business license rules rates in place by January first. We can't really hold off people from wanting to buy their license, even though they're not required to pay for it until March first. But they like to get an order, get their accounts set up, and many like to renew and just have things working, so when they file taxes a couple of months later, they're, they're in place. In short, these, uh, provide substantial relief to about twenty-one thousand businesses in the city, a little over a hundred dollars per business, and these are all businesses generating three hundred thousand dollars or less in receipts. This threshold has not been moved for twenty-five years. In the nineties, Governor Allen made an issue of the point that he believed that the B-Pole tax was an encumbrance to people, a, beginning a business, and it was tough on small businesses. And I was, um, part of a group that looked at creating a uniformity across the state of Virginia on the treatment of the B-Pole tax, and along with members of the General Assembly, came up with a, a threshold of a hundred thousand for any locality that wanted to take it, to say that they would pay a minimum registration fee of fifty dollars. That would allow smaller businesses to stay in business without, uh, paying the higher rate, but also it would be a easier way for businesses to begin. In short, we're moving, my suggestion is that you consider moving that to three hundred thousand. Uh, the businesses over the last two years have been highly impacted by the economy, the pandemic, the restrictions on commerce related to the pandemic and their customers. And this is centric to small businesses. The larger businesses, the big boxes and the like, have, um, have performed quite well, and their, their receipts are, are substantial and have grown a lot. Small businesses are struggling. Uh, we usually have, we're down on our new business registrations, and our out-of-business registrations are up over the last two years. So I think this would be a response to small businesses as well as an incentive. When you marry that to the, uh, tax relief for new businesses, uh, Vice Mayor Wilson is aware of, of this particular, uh, proposal, because she was integral in, uh, developing the proposal with former member, um, Davis, who was a member of the General Assembly. And the General Assembly provided for, uh, localities to exempt the first two years of the business license tax and the business property tax on businesses in their city. Virginia Beach and Chesapeake snapped the opportunity right up back in twenty twelve, and we've been monitoring that. This, this would expand that two-year exemption or suspension, as I like to say, for not only the business license tax on new businesses, but for the business property tax. There's about, there's not a tremendous impact like there is on twenty-one thousand businesses. This is about a hundred and seventy businesses all in all, but it can save them an average of sixteen hundred dollars in taxes. That's a great incentive for someone, uh, to come to Virginia Beach and say, I want to open my business here, because I can, I can get my feet down and get going, along with the fact that they would pay forty dollars for their, their license, until they exceeded thirty, um, three hundred thousand dollars in receipts. The final, um, option is, uh, considering what I consider probably, uh, one of the most put upon classes in, of taxpayers that we have in the city, and that is seniors and disabled taxpayers. And you've already provided relief as a council by reducing the rate on their personal property from four, four dollars, from four to three. This proposal brings it down to essentially zero, a rate of a millionth of a cent, which creates a nominal, or a... creates a nominal or a bill that is not sent. It would, it would help just over 900 taxpayers whose income is less than $29,500 a year, and their assets, including that automobile that this may exempt, does not exceed 70,000. It's, I think it costs $71,000. I, I think this is one that should be done, could be done, but it's, it's something that needs to be considered with other things, and I certainly respect Charles' prerogative to do that. I, I would end with this. The, the business license component of these three proposals is time-sensitive, and it does touch 21,000-plus businesses in the city. And I think that it is a great sign that we are glad they're here, we want them to flourish, and we want them to stay.
So Phil, had you looked at doing a $200,000 threshold instead of a $300,000 threshold, and what the budget impact would be?
I can give you that impact, but I, I, I really think that this, this moves the businesses, this considers three-quarters.
I'm just curious, because this is almost $3 million.
Well, no, it's $2.2 million for the business license portion, and it's another couple of hundred together for the, for the other two. And the rates could perhaps change, you know, the flat fee rates could change and, and bring in another hundred or a couple of hundred thousand, but I, I do think that this, this covers all classes of businesses, whether you're a realtor paying at $5.80 a thousand, or a wholesaler, or a carpenter, or, or a service industry. And I, I don't, I don't think we get into the game of trying to help one industry or the other. We say we want small businesses. I mean, this is the feedback I've gotten, is it small businesses, you know, butcher baker, candlestick maker, everybody is, is treated fairly in this, so.
Yeah, I'm just sort of stunned that it has to be acted on so quickly in the, in the middle of the budget year. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Kellum, for briefing us on this measure. I think from looking at this the first time, I know we've spoken just very recently today. I think this is something where I know I can support, I can support, and I hope my colleagues will find a way to support, primarily because this does help small businesses. And small businesses are the, are the backbone of our economy here in Virginia Beach. And in order to make sure we, we increase the vitality of our community and of our city, I think it's, we have to find ways and innovative ways, even though this has been here for 25 years, I think it's a, it's a solid way to make sure we can provide and help necessary businesses, small businesses, either recover, start, or thrive here in our city. And so I think there's something I, I can get behind. Thank you.
Mr. Moss?
I know we've had many sessions, but yet we, we rarely ever come up with written budget guidance, though we talk about it every year. Well, this is a good example of providing budgetary guidance in a, in a voting way. And I think we have the revenue growth that allows us to provide the offset, and even if we didn't, I think businesses are, are, need the break. And I think, you know, most job growth is coming from people employing less than 10 people. That's just where we are. And anything that helps a, a business get through those first early, usually undercapitalized first five years of their business is a plus. Once again, is it going to probably make or break, you know, a company? Probably not. Is it going to keep a quote-unquote Warren Buffett zombie company alive? Likely not. But it, but it does send the message that we appreciate and understand the burdens that they're under, and what we can do, we are able to do, and we did do. So I, I can support this. I think this is the right message to send at this time.
I do want you to know it was delegate Sal Iaquinto that I worked with.
Oh, my, my, apologies.
Ms. Wood.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kellum, for coming up and providing that clarity for us. Certainly, I would like to join the support for small businesses, anything that can help our small businesses, not just survive, but thrive in our city is most important, and also to help our, the elderly, anything we can do to make things better, to support them. I'm happy to do it, and I'm happy to sponsor this legislation with Councilmember Tower, and definitely will support it. Thank you.
Mr. Branch?
Question. City manager, does this have any impact on the school revenue sharing formula or anything like that? Any other ramifications?
Not, I don't think it, not sure on the school revenue portion. I'm not sure if it does. The impact on the revenue is explained here. Looks like there's an offset that's going to be needed, about $2.1 million.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Manager?
Mm-hmm.
Have, have you, have you seen this proposal?
Councilmember Jones, this is my first time seeing it.
I'm sorry?
This is my first time seeing it, Councilmember Jones.
Okay. So I think we need to see.
B-Pole, correction.
What his reaction is as far as how he's going to offset the two point, the, two point, $880,000. Not opposed to it, I just want to know where it's going to come from.
In the, in the attach right here, it mentions that fund balance could be the source for the offset as well, and it clarified, just got to update that B-Pole is shared by the schools as well.
So it does affect the school's budget?
It does.
Mr. Berluci?
Thank you. Well, I'm, I appreciate Mr. Kellum being here, and I definitely appreciate the proposal from Mr. Tower. I guess I would just have some questions about the offset of $2 million, and we're just about to enter budget, the budget season. And as we consider, I mean, I could think of a myriad of very worthy investments, public investments, with, if, if we had a $2 million laying around. Of course, having an offset like this for senior citizens and people who with disabilities is also worthy. I just wonder if it's appropriate to consider that, more appropriate to consider that in the scope of the entire, of the, all the entirety of considerations when we formulate a budget. And to that point, I would just ask, I'm, for more clarity about what, what the urgency is for adoption next week. I think you did mention that, Mr. Kellum, but if you could just, for my purposes, just help clarify that for me. And also, I, I, I understand that you may have shared this concept with some members of council, but certainly not all. We do have a week to digest it, and I appreciate that. But if you could just help me understand the urgency a little bit better.
Right.
And also the process by which this was formulated.
Right. First of all, can I, can I, I might not answer in the sequence that you asked.
No problem.
The, the growth in the business license tax has been about 33% since 2004. That's as far as back I can get the record of that. We have about 28,000 businesses in the city. This, this would address just about three-quarters of the businesses. The, I think your question was the offsets. What was the second question?
The, the process by which this proposal was formulated, and as well, just help me understand the urgency for adoption next week.
The urgency for adoption is, we will begin selling 2,022 business licenses on Wednesday, the 15th. We, we have to begin selling them on January the 2nd. The, the folks will just be lined up, and I, I can't, it's not something I can handle retroactively. It's, it's one of these things where it's a revenue stream that is growing, it is a key revenue stream for the city, and it's, it's something that affects the business community in the broadest sense. It's the largest revenue stream directly from the business community. Business property tax or business tangible tax on computers, desks, and the like is not as big a revenue stream, but that is included in here for new businesses. The, the process of review for this has, has been, my experience dealing with those businesses over the last 24 years, in fact, over the last 39 years, and I can tell you that the, the mayor has had two review commissions in the last 10, 10 or 11 years on how do you smooth the way for businesses to get into business? How do we create efficiencies on their interactivity with various city departments? And one of the most succinct ways to do that is to make it simple, quick, for them to get registered. And to pay a $40 fee to get registered is a lot easier than saying, well, you're going to have to pay this amount on this rate, and once you reach this threshold, your rate may change and so forth. And we've run the numbers, and this truly does give the most bang for the buck. There was talk about perhaps moving the threshold to a lower amount, but it has been 25 years, and other cities, Chesapeake, Chesterfield County, Loudoun County, other large similar localities have implemented some of those approaches, but the cleanest approach is to have a, a threshold and a rate up to that threshold, from an administrative standpoint and from the business operator's standpoint.
Thank you.
I, I do have the exact numbers on, the B-Pole would be $2,180,425. The, the business property relief would be $265,516, and the, the personal property relief for elderly, disabled, and seniors would be $70,616. And I do think that there is a summary statement with, that all of you received today that does point that out.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Mr. Tower?
I just want to thank Mr. Kellum for his presentation. I know he, as much as anyone, wishes this were in sync with the normal budgetary consequences. Just for the public's sake and for my colleagues, I think there is a, you know, you've got to weigh it. If, if it were a larger, larger amount of money, it might not, might not meet my test in terms of taking it sort of out of sync. But given the fact that calendar year is, the calendar's not going to stop for anything we do here, and his office has to proceed, I hope you'll consider this. I would understand if you, the concerns that you have about it, but I think it's a, given the number of people that this could reach, it sends a good message to our taxpayers that we're thinking about them, and this is the time it does them some good, to tell them we'll get to you next year is just a delay that I, I, for one, am not, don't need to, to impose on anybody. I, I'd like to get it passed, but I, I appreciate the commissioner's efforts in putting this together. I think it's a worthwhile effort, and I think it'll be well-received if we pass it.
Thank you. And I, I'll make myself available to you folks before the meeting next week, or, you know, at any time like that, or, you know, the manager, anyone you so appoint to do so.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, now I think we can do the agenda review.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers other than the ones I've been told about?
Yes, on J2. For under ordinances and resolutions, number two, we have speakers now.
And I understand we have speakers on J3?
Yes, sir.
And also speakers on Planning Item 7?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's all I'm aware of at this time.
All right. Members of council, under ordinances and resolutions, does anybody want to have any issues with Item 1 ordinance, or Item 4, A and V, 5, 6, 7, A and V, and 8? No? Yes? Mr. Moss?
I had some extended conversation, and I appreciate the manager calling me on that. On number one, I've, I've, I've expressed my concerns on implementation and flex time, given my experience with it in the workplace. I, I think he took some of those on board, and if he doesn't take the other one on the board, that's fine, too, but I did share those, and he clarified some things for me. I'm happy with that, but I did want to mention that. And with regards to two, I did pose some questions. I don't have access to my emails, so if those were emailed to me and someone can print those off before we come back, that would be great.
So are, are you opposed to J1, any part of J1?
No.
No? Okay.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Item number eight, I sent the email to the council requesting that we indefinitely defer that. That one was sent to council erroneously. The staff work wasn't completed on that yet. It's not ready for primetime, so I.
Would you like us to defer it?
Correct, indefinitely. It'll come back, but probably in a different version and after more briefings with council, but it's not ready for primetime yet, so I'd like to defer it. Yes, sir.
Okay, under planning, Item 1, Murphy's of Virginia Beach, Stephen Yuanyi Family LLC, Beach District.
There are no speakers signed up at this point.
None signed up.
Not at this point. Mr. Tower?
Are you okay?
Yes, if there are no speakers.
Okay.
There may be, expecting there will be.
Item 2, Virginia Beach Development Authority, Virginia Beach Development Authority and Prop LLC, modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning, Princess Anne District, deferred on November 9.
I think that's all been satisfactory resolve, so that can go on.
Yes, finally.
Item 3, Friends School for a modification of conditions, reduce acreage and expansion of existing administration building and construction, outdoor, state, classroom, shade, art, patio, Beach District.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Item 4, 1537 LLC for a modification of conditions, rate reduce acreage for private school, 1537?
Yeah, it's related.
It's related, yeah. You okay?
Yes, sir.
Item 5, Hackers LLC, Potter Properties Group LLC, change of, for a conditional change of zoning from B1, neighborhood district, additional B2, Community District, convert existing vacant building, food and eating and drinking establishment, virtual golf simulators, Lynn Haven District.
I'm fine with it.
You okay?
What do we do about the sign?
I'm fine with the sign, but if we want to hear it, we can hear it.
So that's clear.
You mean leaving the sign as it is?
I, I'm fine with it.
So are we, are we hearing it or not?
It's a, it's a non-conforming sign, is what it is. I frankly don't have any problem with it myself, but.
Neither do I.
No, I, I support the district councilman.
I'm voting no. I, I think the sign should come down.
Moss, no on five. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Only just Mr. Moss, no. Item 6, Jose M. Rivera, K&amp;P Enterprises LLC, conditional use permit, rate tattoo parlor, 549 Newtown Road, Kempfville District.
Good. Yep. You're not getting a free tattoo, are you?
No. All right. Item 8, James D. White, revocable living trust, conditional use, use permit, short-term rental, 407 18th Street, Beach District.
It's to be deferred.
That, that item needs to be deferred indefinitely and referred back to the planning commission due to an issue with the advertisement.
Indefinite.
It doesn't have to go back to planning commission, it just needs to be re-apt, no?
No. It, it needs to go back.
Sorry, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. Just new information.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay.
What did she say? I didn't hear her.
Just disregard.
Okay. Okay. Item Nine, resolution to adopt and amend the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan Two Sixteen, raise stormwater impacts for discretionary land use applications.
Mr. Jones, I'd like to recommend we get a briefing on this and defer it and have a briefing on this. Is everybody okay with that?
No, I'm not. You know, it's, it's amazing. And, you know, we went out and we voted on a resolution that this just implements, eleven to zero, and told the public what we were going to do. And in return, if we were gonna do all those things, they could count that we would follow through. We then asked them to vote to let us borrow five hundred and sixty-seven point five million dollars. Mr. Jones and I have met every Friday during the summer, through October, and in November. And all this does is take the existing, which we have voted on and approved, stormwater management regulations that are in effect today, and say our complances, they have to be complied with. So, so if we're doing this, then we need to come up and say, oh, we want to modify our stormwater management regulations. This doesn't change the zero point zero 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 four discharge standard. It doesn't change any of the regulations that the planning department has to apply. But what it's saying is that, because an applicant has a right to bring an application that doesn't comply with the regulations and still bring it to us for a vote. They have a right to hear from us. This just says the, the planning department can't put a recommendation to approval on it if it doesn't comply. I've seen the thing from the building community, but what I kind of hear, because this was a discussion, and Mr. Jones was there when they had it, when they thought that the Stormwater Management Appeals Board was gonna be able to grant variances from the standard, they were just waiting for the board to be established so they could come in and ask for variances from the standard. Well, that doesn't make any sense, to pass a standard that prevents flooding and then, but when they found out the appeals board, and Mr. Jones can correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't gonna be in a position to grant variances from the established policy, then there wasn't much interest in the appeals board. Am I correct there, Mr. Jones?
That's correct.
So I'm really having a difficult time. I'm saying more information's always better, but I'm just telling you that the comments coming in are basically saying that we can't grow if you actually enforce the regulations that we've already adopted. I don't believe that. The people around the table that was from industry, including the Coastal Builders Association, didn't believe that. So I'm really trying to, I'm really struggling to understand, other than the emails that we get, but they don't match up with the reality of the content. So I am concerned how the public reads that we're backpedaling from a commitment that we publicly made that we would do. And so that's my concern vice mayor. I don't know how a further briefing changes that, but I, I, I think it sends the, the wrong message. So I guess if we're deferring it, then there should be something we are deferring it for. Like, what is the information that we're missing? And what is the specific concern that we are addressing? Because I know Mr. Jones and I labored hard through all these meetings every Friday morning for two hours, trying to work with industry to get to where we are. And I'm just having a difficulty understanding what the, what the real delta is. What's the real issue versus just on the surface issue? So we know what we're working on, that's all.
Anybody else want to say anything, Mr. Tower?
My comment, excuse me.
Go ahead. I defer to Mr. Jones, yeah.
My comment on, on it is, in addition to what Mr. Moss has said, and I agree with everything he just said, is that we are actually making the process simpler for the developer with this, with this order. Because all, the way it reads is they, all they have to do is say that they agree that they will conform to, to the ordinances that the council has passed, and they will not be held up on their development process. If they do that, the only reason they would be held up is if they say they don't agree with and are not, and want to make an, an exception. And, and, and that, you know, then they, they would have to come to council and, and verbalize their, their disagreement. But they're, you know, so they have an option if they disagree. But they, but if they agree that they're going to conform to the, to the ordinance, they can move ahead. I mean, it, it, it's a pretty simple solution for, for them to get their, get their whole project approved much faster and get it going. So I, I don't, I don't, I, I really don't see what the problem is here, but.
Does anybody else want to say anything, Mr. Tower?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm confused also. I'm not sure exactly what generated this objection, whether there's simply, as we would call them, disappointed litigants that didn't, didn't prevail in a, in a, in, in the process that two, our two council representatives oversaw, or whether this is something new, just a new, new concept. But I don't quite understand what the objection is either. But I want to understand it. I wish I did. I just haven't had time to track it down.
Mr. Branch?
Well, part of it may be a lack of communication. I, I've not been privy to, I, I wasn't here for the ordinance or the resolution that was And I think we're getting a briefing on the work of your committee very soon. Is that right?
Next week.
Next week. Well, that's gonna be a real opportunity for me to, to catch up to where the liaisons are on this, this issue. But I think what concerned me the most was the reading the verbatim from the planning commission and the fact that I, I, I don't know what they know. And that concerns me, that.
May I respond?
Yes, sir, please.
My interpretation of the verbatim from the planning commission was, is that they, was the time that they were given to make a decision. And, 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 and they, they just didn't feel like they had had time to look at the ordinance and, and make a decision as to what they thought of it. So instead of, instead of deferring it, they, they just voted down, is, is what happened. And, and am I, am I, am I correct, mister?
My understanding.
I think, given the timing of the resolution, there wasn't an opportunity to, to defer it. It pretty much said three weeks after the, the referendum.
Right. So I.
I only have one last comment.
Mr. Blue, just ahead of you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Well, I think all of this discussion really leads me to the conclusion that probably we should hear this item, and that this conversation would be more appropriate for our formal meeting than now, when we have appointments to get to and a lot of other unfinished business. So I would be willing to save my remarks for that time unless we decide as a body it's more appropriate, and I'd be happy to share my opinion now. But I think what we've heard from a number of stakeholders is, is a request for more information and more discussion, including, I would be very interested, as Mr. Branch, in learning about the conversations that the liaisons to the Stormwater Working Group have had, and any conclusions and policy recommendations that may be forthcoming from that committee. Because what I haven't heard is that by pretty much a universal standard, there's concern within the business community, and we do, we need safe, dry, healthy neighborhoods. We also need a thriving business community, and I know that's the work that you've been working to identify those, where those intersections exist. But I think we need more information about, more context about what that looks like from your perspective and from the perspective of the business community and the residents. And I will be very interested in, in receiving that feedback as, and particularly in, within the context of considering the ordinance that's before us. So I would be willing to support Ms. Wilson's suggestion for a deferral, just on the basis of more discussion, more information. There's, even if it's a matter of one week or until our first meeting in January, I'm not suggesting it should be an indefinite, indefinite deferral, or that it would be a denial in any way, form, or fashion. But I think more conversation about this issue is warranted, particularly because of the concerns we've heard raised from the business community legitimately. So I think in terms of the timeframe and expenses associated with moving new enterprise forward in Virginia Beach, which is also an important priority for this body.
Do we have time on the agenda, Mr. DeHany, for next week to have a briefing?
If that's what you want, council members, we could do that. It's a very, it's a, it's your last meeting, and it's very packed already. We can pu, we can punt some things off, but everything that's on there are pretty important, like the audits and from the financial audit and the CAFR and things like that, plus an update on the stormwater program that Ms. Henley's been asking for, then also an update from the Friday task force meetings as it relates to the stormwater regulations. We can add it, it just means you're gonna have a longer meeting.
What about January fourth?
January seventh. We can do that if that's your desire, council member.
I mean, I'm not looking for indefinite, but I genuinely would really like to have a briefing on this. But, you know, I, Mr. Moss?
What I was gonna suggest is I think item B. Pulls, so we can discuss it when it comes up. But if, in fact, we move it to the fourth, what I would like to have is, would hope, expectation that the staff who works with the industry all the time would try to catalog and maybe could itemize concerns, and that each member here could, whatever concerns you're hearing, because you might be getting different emails than I'm getting, but there, but I just want to remind people that seventy-two point seven four, I think it was, or seven-one percent of the people voted for something, and I think they somewhat knew what we voted for. So that is a big voice when we're looking at all that. But then you'll ha, by the fourth, you will have the ability to see the product that we have discussed in executive session, as you will, and then on another development. So it's not the first time we've mentioned these options. But you'll have a chance to look and see what's being proposed, and then the Fourth of January would provide you now all the background information you need to judge. But, but so that was gonna be my recommendation in light of what I've heard from my colleagues. My, my resoluteness relative to the goodness of it will go unchanged, but I hope that I can win more review over if you can be privy to the same information that Mr. Jones and I have experienced in our discussions with industry. And I do think we have some disappointed litigants in there in the group. Nonetheless, I'm, feel like I do need to be an advocate for the seventy-two percent of the people that said yes for that bond referendum to deliver on the resolution. So I would support a deferral to the Fourth of January.
I appreciate that.
And put that on consent at that point, and we'll save our discussion for that.
So we're gonna defer to January fourth, right? And Item Ten, Nemo Methodist Church for certificate appropriateness, field of historical review board decision, applicant request withdrawn.
I would support that. So I think next is closed session, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. You have, you have the read in there?
Yes.
I think.
So the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three seven one one A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one one A seven. Lynch versus City of Virginia Beach and Officer Simmons. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy or the public body pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one one A three. Princess Anne District, Princess Anne District, Beach District, Beach District. Public contract, discussion of the award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one dash one A twenty-nine, Pembroke Mall, Bonnie Road. Public funds investment, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one one A six. Project Coastal. Personnel matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of Pacific Public Officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one one A one. Council appointments, council boards, commissioners, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Is there any more to open?
I think there's a, an item on there, which I won't mention the, the company's name, but I think it's that coastal issue deals with electrification, is that correct?
We'll go, we'll do that one first.
Because I have to recuse myself. I just want to state the reason why.
Yeah.
Because under the larger federal energy regulatory, which, commission, which is FERC's regulations, whenever that lands, it interfaces, it will be interfacing with Dominion Energy Transmission Lines, what that relationship will be and the financial conditions are unknown. But given my stake in Dominion Energy and my, my dividends exceed the threshold of the conflict of interest, I will not be attending that briefing.
That's sufficient, Mr. Smith?
That's more than sufficient. It's a different, it's, it's one of the real estate items, the public held property items, but yes, sir. Let's bank.
Mr. Tower, may I have your vote, please?
I'm sure.
Thank you. Ten to zero, you have recessed into closed session.
That is gonna be first.